It is now 6:30 and I'll call this work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. The city clerk will note for the record that Mayor Couch is out of town and I, Suzanne Will, will be acting mayor. This evening, item number one is presentation of the 2015 budget. Ms. Heather Johnston, city manager, and Ms. Kelly Stri are presenting. Ms. Johnston?
Thank you, Madam Acting Mayor, members of the council. This is, as you know, the sixth meeting that we've had on the budget and we continue to get better information and refine our estimates. And so Ms. Stri is going to go through tonight the general fund and then other property tax-supported funds as well. We have a couple pieces of information online for the public to make sure that they have the information that they need in order to get additional questions answered. The city of Burnsville has, for the last couple of years, been doing a budget open house video instead of doing a physical open house. And then there's also a forum through which you can submit comments online as well that we will share with the council. The second piece of information is we now have the budget workbook that you all received on the 31st or on November 1st that has the information that you used to, as we walk through the budget process. So that includes our draft financial plans and additional information that will also be included in Ms. Stri's presentation. And so we have two additional meetings after this and Ms. Stri will go through the rest of the calendar. But unless there are questions for me, I will have her go ahead and start her presentation.
Just to underscore what you said, I thank you. And that is that the citizens have all the information we have.
That's correct, Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Sherry.
Thank you.
Good evening. I think my PowerPoint will come up here in a moment. Is it up? Okay. All right. Our first slide is one you've seen at every budget meeting that we've had so far and it shows you where we are in the process and we're moving down the process. These are your final two meetings to discuss the budget in detail. Before this, we started back in June with estimates and had refined estimates in August. And just last work session, October 28th, you heard from all of the department heads on the things that are important and the challenges that they're facing in their departments. That is another piece of information I would point the public to as well as that work session that the video is online of that work session that shows department heads speaking about their individual budgets. Tonight's meeting, we will be focusing on an overview of the budget. That's a big part of the presentation tonight. And then we'll move into the details of the general fund, some special revenue funds, and the tax increment funds, finally. In two weeks, at the November 25th meeting, we'll dive into capital and debt as those are pretty related, as well as the enterprise funds because they have a large portion of capital. That will include the water and sewer utility funds, the stormwater fund, ICE Center Golf Course, the AIM Center, and a couple other smaller enterprise funds. The base for beginning your budget discussion tonight is that the city is in sound financial position. The city has contracted with Standard and Poor's to rate our bonds for the last few bond issues that we've had, and they have assigned the highest possible rating at AAA for our city. They evaluate the city on a wide range of financial measures, including the city's financial position, which hard numbers that they're looking at, financial management practices and policies, and the economic conditions within the city and the state. Moody's is another bond rating agency that we've used in the past, and even though we haven't used them on the most recent issues, they do still do a surveillance rating of us periodically, and they just completed that this past week and just today found out that we have a AAA rating with them as well. So we are on both of those AAA highest rating. So that's a good place to start for this evening's conversation. The most notable factors that contribute to the city's continued top ratings are low debt, strong fund balance and cash position, and your sound budgeting practices, and most importantly, your five-year financial plans. That demonstrates you're making your decisions within a long-term view, future perspective, as opposed to just looking at what is good for this year. So where have we been throughout this process? We started out in June estimating that we might see a 4.7% increase in the tax levy. In September, we were able to lower that to 4.4% for the max tax, and that's what people will see when they get their tax, maximum tax statements, which I believe we got notice were mailed from the county today. So people should have their property tax estimated statements in the mail in the next few days. That will show the 4.4% from the max tax that you approved in September. And now, in the budget books that you received November 1st, we are proposing to lower that to a 4.0% increase in the property tax levy. We were able to do that because of some good news on health insurance for our employees. We do not need to see any increase in the city's portion for this 2015, so that was very helpful. And we had some improved revenue projections and a small use of fund balance to offset a one-time expense. Let's start with a high-level overview of where the property tax levies go within the city of Burnsville. There are five funds that the property tax levy goes to directly. The largest one would be the general fund. That also includes the EDA fund, and although the EDA is technically a separate entity with separate taxing authorities, you're the governing body and have control over that fund. So in the interest of transparency, we've always included the EDA levy in the city totals as we look at the grand total for the city levy. Within the general fund, there are a few other funds that are funded from a transfer of property tax levy, including the Parks Capital Equipment Vehicle and Facilities Fund, IT Capital Fund, and the Street Maintenance Fund. Those are included in that general fund total there. The other two larger funds would be the debt service fund. That has an increase this year of $132,000, and that is because the Highway 5 and 13 interchange, a city portion of the debt is coming online this year. The infrastructure trust fund levy is scheduled for a $50,000 increase. That's a long-term plan that has been discussed at each meeting to date, as well as the Emerald Ashborer, similarly, $50,000 increase annually. And we talked about the Economic Development Authority, but that's a $25,000 increase, and that is a long-term plan that began back several years ago when we moved the Economic Development Department activities to that fund. An important question that you have every year is how much of this increase in the levy is offset by new tax base? While the actual spread of the tax levy is a formula, we can estimate how much new construction will pay in property tax next year. The difference is the increase that will be spread to the existing tax base. And the good news is, recent updates to the taxable market value info that we receive from the county indicate that this amount is higher than we knew even when we sent out the workbooks to you. So this is an updated slide, and about $30 million of new construction valuation will come online in 2015. That will provide about $255,000 of new taxes in 2015. I think the number we had previously was about 210, so a slight improvement there. That leaves about $900,000 of the total tax levy increase, or 3.1% to be spread among the property owners that existed last year. As you know, the spread to all property owners is based on the valuation of each property as a percent of the total of all properties within Burnsville. The county assigns and assesses valuation to the all existing properties each year at the beginning of the previous year, so this year that would be January 1st of 2014. This is based on prior year neighborhood sales and other comparable sales, so sales that happened in the year 2013. So you can see there is a bit of a time lag. And property inspections are done on a rotating basis every few years of the actual homes in Burnsville. And this gives property owners a time to appeal their property valuations, but that's back in May. So what we're discussing now is based on the valuations that are set and were set earlier this year. Oftentimes, we do receive phone calls of people concerned about that valuation. That time actually has passed, but to be looking for, one thing I want to point out to the public is to be looking for those valuations coming next year in March. And if you have a concern about valuations of your property, that's the time to do that. So each individual property's valuation is assessed individually. That can vary significantly between properties, but in total, and as a result of all the changes that occurred in 2014 values, you can see the changes that happened here between 2014 and 2015. There is a total of $5.4 billion of property value in Burnsville now. That's about $400 million more than last year, so that's good news for the property owners of Burnsville. About $30 million of that was new construction, mostly in commercial and industrial. The rest of the increase in valuation is increase on existing, market value of existing properties. After a long decline in valuation over several years during the recession, the property values are recovering, so that is good news. The residential markets saw the larger declines than commercial and industrial in the past years. They're also seeing larger increases as they recover. In the past, there's been a shift from residential to commercial. That's turning around now. The shift in valuation is going from commercial to residential. So you can see from this slide that residential piece of the pie has grown from 60% to 61%.
I have a question. Yeah, thank you, Suzanne. I noticed an increase in value of our apartments.
There was some new construction that came online, value in 20...
For rentals?
Yes, and due to the time lag, I don't have exactly which properties that was that came online, but so it wouldn't be new construction in 2015. It would have occurred in the past.
Oh, I see. Okay, in 2014.
And that could be also not just like a brand-new building, it could be remodeling.
Well, and that was what I was asking, because I'm aware of apartment buildings that are either close to me or I pass by. Many of them have changed hands and many of them have really upgraded their properties and made them, you know, really improved the properties. So I was wondering if that reflected that. Is that what we're seeing, Heather? Do you think?
Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, yeah, that's a piece of it. Some of those, because we did have several large complexes that changed hands and they put some significant dollars in there. I think some of those came online. Those improvements were done in 13, and those evaluations would be seen in here. Any of those that have been just still making improvements here in 2014, you wouldn't see that additional value reflected, but you're absolutely right.
So it would be fair to say that our apartments are improving in near quality?
Yeah. Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Sherry, correct.
Okay, thank you.
This is a different view that shows historically how those values have changed. So as I referred to in the past, so the blue part on the bottom are the residential and apartments value over the historical time and commercial and industrial. And you can see, beginning in about 2006 and '07, the amount shifted to commercial. There was more as a total percent in commercial value than there was in residential. And 2015 is, it's a slight change, but it does make a difference as to how the property taxes spread. There is an increase in the residential piece. So what does the tax shift mean to the average property tax owner? An average is a hypothetical property. We look at about a $200,000 property. Home values on average saw 11% growth. So to a $200,000 home, I believe it was 190-something last year, would inflate to $212,000 of value this year. That particular property, again, a hypothetical property, but would see about 68% increase per year.
$68.
68, I'm sorry. $68, yes, that would make a difference, wouldn't it? $68 increase, or $5.67 per month increase in property taxes. The million-dollar commercial property is just a value we use to compare every year. That particular property will see about a $213 decrease in their property taxes. Are there any questions on this slide?
Do you have figures on what a $212,000 house last year property taxes would have been overall?
The total amount? I do not have that handy, but we can provide that at the next meeting.
Because I think those figures would be important to help our citizens understand, you know, what the $68 increase is. What was the overall city property taxes on a home worth $212,000 last year? What is it this year? And how does that $68 figure factor into that amount? And I think that's important, because we sit and talk about, you know, percentages. Unless you see the real numbers, some of that is, I believe, is misleading. So that is what I'd like to see. Again, how much property taxes from the city perspective was paid last year on a $212,000 house? Now it's plus $68, and let's look at the figures.
So you're saying just the city portion only, not the school district, not the county?
Correct, because we don't control that.
Well, and not only that, but as I'm thinking, you know, we have homeowners who live in different school districts, so that's going to be different according to where they... So, yeah, but I think Bill has a good point, that in real dollars, what would that homeowner be paying of the $212,000 home in total dollars for the city? And then, you know, we're talking about $68 increase.
We do have those numbers, that's how we came up to that, but I don't have it off the top of my head, so we can certainly come up with that and get that back to you. The city council, as you said, can't control the property values or the formulas to calculate the tax for the different type of properties. We only have, you only have control over the total amount of the Burnsville tax levy. So let's return to the overview of that total levy. Comparison to last year, the proposed levy is $30.1 million. That's a 4% increase over last year. The total proposed budget for the entire city is $102 million, and that compares to $85 million for 2014. That is a, it seems like, huge increase. It is a large number increase. That is mainly due to two large projects, capital improvement projects for 2015, and that is the meter replacement program. That's $4.7 million, and the infrastructure related to Cliff Road interchange at $3.2 million. The CIP will be discussed in detail at the next meeting. And with any CIP project that you have, those individual projects will come back to you for approval before anything happens. But this is, if everything in the CIP goes forward as planned, this is what it would look like to the budget. So the change in the property tax levy, broken out by type, there's a, the total change in the budget is 4.0%, or about $1,160,000. $675,000, or just about 2.3% of that increase, is proposed to fund increases in the net cost of current services. So that's net of any other revenue changes or other funding source changes. $155,000 is to restore Parks Capital Plan funding, and $132,000 for the increased debt levy, mainly due to the 5 and 13 interchange debt increase, as I mentioned before. And then the rest of those plans are about $200,000, or about a 0.7% increase in the tax levy, to fund the long-term plans that we've been discussing at each of the previous budget meetings that we had. That would be the Economic Development Authority, the Emerald Ashborer Plan, Equipment Vehicles and Facilities Plan, and the IT Capital Plan. Actually, the IT Capital Plan doesn't have an increase this year, but normally would be included.
It'd also be helpful for me, and I'm sure you don't have those figures, I'd like to see what the current level of services increase, starting in 2011 to '12, to '13, to '14, and '15, where at our next budget meeting. I see it's 2.3%, which to just maintain our current level of services, that's our cost. And I'd like to see what they were for the previous three years for a percentage increase as well, to then make that figure more understanding maybe to the citizens in Burnsville as well.
We can do that.
I had a caveat to that. Because of the special circumstances related to certain legislation and other factors, maybe we should see it in raw numbers minus those factors.
Well, then go back two years, because that was, that wouldn't involve the market, the...
Sales tax?
No, the sales tax should be considered. It wouldn't affect the home stood market value.
Yeah, I think what we're, if I understand your question, are you looking for what the core cost drivers, the effect, minus special legislation or changes that would have given us a big credit or done something to offset that?
I think Councilmember Keeley's correct on that. That'd be a better figure, correct?
Madam Acting Mayor, councilmembers, I think what we can do is we can put together what those numbers actually were, maybe do a little bit of a breakdown in terms of personnel services versus something else, but then we can tell you where the major caveats are.
Thank you.
This shows the total budget, again, compared to the prior year. And as you can see, the purple segment is the capital projects, and that is where the The total $102 million budget by fund, you can see that the general fund is about 36% of that total. So those are, that's where the majority of the general government services are occurring. The enterprise funds are funded by the fees, and that's mainly the Water and Sewer Fund, Stormwater Fund. Those would be the two largest enterprise funds that we have. And all other funds are in the 29%. Those would be your capital project funds, infrastructure trust fund. Any questions on that? And then looking at it by type, you can see operations are at 57%, capital at 34%, and debt service 9% of the total budget. Just another way to look at the total budget. The finance plan for the general bond fund can be found in your budget document on page 86 of the workbook. Enterprise funds on page 91, and detailed debt analysis is also included in the capital and debt section, beginning on page 139.
Question, Dan?
Question. I wanted to ask, how does that 9% debt service compare to our own prior years? Because I can't remember what it is. And then how does that level of debt compare to other sister cities?
I can answer on our own. It was 10% last year.
Do we basically run in that 9, 10 range, year after year?
Our debt service has been very level for the last, I want to say, four or five years. It's been about the same number with an increase this year due to 5 and 13 adding on. So the percentage kind of varies with the total budget, and since this year is kind of a higher total budget, it's going to, it's going to change slightly.
Right. It would be a little higher than 9%, but not for those other, that other $30 million.
And straight dollar-wise, it's very level funding on the debt services.
Got you. And then, can you speak to how we compare to other sister cities?
I don't have that information.
Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Keeley, are you interested in how we compare in terms of debt service or outstanding debt?
Percentage of budget, really, that's really the number.
Percentage of budget.
Then it kind of, it makes all playing fields the same. Every city might have their own anomaly like we do, where we have an abnormally large total budget, but for the most part, if we look at the last three or four, let's say three to five years, to our sister cities, is 9% really good? Is it pretty much average? Are we a little higher?
Sorry, Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Keeley, generally speaking, folks tend to do the comparisons based on outstanding debt as a percentage of total budget, and we do tend to rank lower than other cities. It's one of the things that the rating agencies often cite is a positive, is that we don't have as much outstanding debt as some of our sisters, or sister cities or comparable cities, I should say.
Thank you. That's what I was looking for. Appreciate it.
When we look at, in the budget, the total source of funds, we're showing a lower number than your $102 million. The difference is use of fund balance. And that's due to mainly planned uses of fund balance. The timing of revenues and expenditures can vary on large projects and cross fiscal years, so that makes a difference. Fund balance is also used to even out large swings in expenditures. The infrastructure trust fund is a good example of that. We keep that as a level funding, but the projects can vary by year. Also, within the debt service fund, we have some use of fund balance due to advanced refunding that we did, so there's some funds on hand. And then, collection of taxes for bonds payable, it crosses years. We collect in December for bonds payable in February, so some use of fund balance that happens there. So you can see that's 96.5%, about a third roughly, coming from property taxes. Others would be charges for services, those would be utility fees, and then user fees Looking at, so the pie chart on the left is the pie chart we just had on the previous slide. The property taxes, if you break the property taxes down, and I apologize, those are kind of small wording there on that, but it shows that the general fund does receive the largest portion of the property taxes with the other funds, as we spoke about. And on other slides, the EDA fund, the debt service fund, infrastructure trust fund, and the EAB, Emerald Ashborer Fund, receiving the other portions. So, major items, the proposed levy is 4%. As of November, we have two of five labor contracts settled for 2015. As of November, we have two of five labor contracts settled for 2015. Non-property tax revenue in the general fund is 11.5, it's at a 0.5 million dollar increase for 2014, from 2014. That would mainly be in our charges for services and permits and inspections. And the enterprise funds, the plan is showing, and the water and sewer, an increase in fees of 4.5 percent. That is consistent with the out-year plans that we had in the previous, in your previous five-year plans. The Stormwater Fund, we're showing no increase. We're able to continue the projects and funding for that program without an increase, as well as the streetlight. Capital, the Water and Sewer Fund has a large project, the Meter Replacement Project, we spoke about, I believe, at the August meeting, is when we last talked about that, that particular project. That will be bonded, and it'll be over two years. The replacement project will be over two years, the bonds will be longer.
Quick question. That 4.65 million, we're, we're increasing our, part of our 4.5 increases to cover the costs of, what is the, roughly, just estimate, the annual carrying costs on that for 4.65 million?
So, the, the annual interest rates, the average interest rate that we would be?
Really, what I'm looking for is what portion of the 4.5 is there because of that 4.6 million investment, and therefore, we had to increase our water and sewer rates to help cover that capital improvement?
The, well, actually, the, the meter replacement plan is paid for by a fee, the council. You have a meter replacement fee, and that money is solely dedicated to repaying that. So, what we've done is, over, a meter typically lasts 20 years. We basically, a resident pays over a 20-year period on a monthly basis, the cost of their meter. That's what our fee works out to. I believe it's, I'm not looking at it right now, is it? Just one second here. It's $1.20 a month to a resident to pay for their meter, basically. So, that funds the meter. So, the debt service and the meter program are funded completely free of that. The water sanitary sewer increase, that's all the rest of the water infrastructure, including the water plant, and all of those things are funded through that source.
Gotcha.
So, the only item that's not included in that 4.5 percent is the meter replacement program.
Self-funded.
And we went with that dedicated funding, so it's very transparent. Here's where the money's going, here's what it's paying for.
Great. Thank you.
We do also anticipate having an increased water collection because the, of the meters being more accurate.
So, factored into the fund rate is that, that $250,000, $300,000 a year lost, after the program's up and running, in two years, we should be recapturing that revenue, putting it back. And we issued, or we're collecting less money from the residents, because we know we are going to recover some of that money to fund the program also.
Sure. Great. Thank you.
We are anticipating about a 4 percent interest rate on the bonds that we would be issuing for that as well. In the Stormwater Fund, Keller Lake Water Quality Improvement Project is 880,000, and the MRQ Lady Bird Ponds are about a million dollars, as, so, big projects within that particular fund. And the AIM Center Finance Plan includes a five-year capital plan, major capital replacements not funded at this time, so any major kinds of things. But it does take care of the things it needs currently, since it's a fairly new building.
What are we funding in depreciation on the AIM Center currently? I know we didn't for the first few years, but I believe we started plugging something in to anticipate replacement of carpet, you know, main, normal maintenance and upkeep and things that, we're not talking about new additions or enhancements, but strictly replacement costs of things that wear out. Like carpet, typically.
There is about 200 to 235 per year.
Per year.
200,000 to 235 per year in capital costs. There's not a lot of, like, new things in that kind of, in that, there might be a few smaller things.
For the most part, it's, it gets a lot of foot traffic.
Right.
More every year, thank goodness. And things will wear out, you know, door hinges, carpet, thresholds, whatever it might be. So, we're now funding depreciation of that asset through this fund. And for those that are watching that are interested, we don't show that as a depreciation line on the P and L of, of the AIM Center. We show it separately as part of our Capital Improvements Plan. And so, that's where you can find these numbers. I know we were criticized for not, and we have been criticized since that opened by some citizens, because we don't report the way the private sector reports depreciation as a non-tax deduction, or non-cash deduction during, every year, on our P and L, per se. I mean, the, the P and L statement for the AIM Center, it's done separately through the Capital Improvements Plan. I don't believe there's an entry on our, maybe I'm speaking out of school. Is there a depreciation entry on the P and L for AIM Center?
Within the CAFER, so the Annual Financial Report, the enterprise funds do have depreciation listed as an expense. So, if you're looking at the historical numbers and how the assets are wearing, but within the budget, we look at, on a cash basis, what do we need to fund on a cash basis? Because that's, that's what we need to control. So, the, the figures that we use in here, on the budget document, are capital outlay.
Right.
And we do also, let me just check on that page. For reference, on page 111, we do include, the very bottom line is how much the annual depreciation is that's expected to be reported in the, the annual financial report. So, you can compare, that's a 500, for 2015, that's $549,000.
Yes. And it, and it increases every year, it looks like, about 45 percent.
As we add capital, it would increase slightly, so, because that would start to be depreciating. So, as you add the 200,000, it does depreciate.
Thank you.
So, yes. And, and part of that is, you know, the, the building itself is going to be the largest portion of that depreciation, the actual building, like the roof, and the, you know, the structure itself. And so, we're not funding in these, we're not replacing those kinds of things in these early years.
Sure.
Of operation. As you get closer to needing a roof, we're going to start having to put that sort of thing into our five-year plans.
Yes.
But hopefully, that won't be for a while.
The question or criticism of the, of the folks who have looked at that is, is we weren't funding it, per se. In other words, we were taking it on our books, but we weren't actually funding it. And so, we weren't setting the money aside in anticipation of when that roof starts to need some repair or replacement or refurbishment, whatever it might be. And now, we are, and we are planning for those types of things for the AIM Center, as I understand this budget. Is that correct?
Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Keeley, I would say that, that, I don't, it's not fully funded in this budget. So, just to be, just to be very clear about it, we will start to put aside, this is going to be a part of the overall discussion of the facilities, but in terms of, we don't need, you know, knock on wood, we don't need a new roof for the AIM Center anytime in the near future. So, we're going to come, look at the plan and make sure that we are starting to set that money aside when that starts coming in the planning horizon. So, it's not yet, but we are certainly trying to take care of the things that you were mentioning, the hinges and the carpet and those kinds of things, sort of on an ongoing basis. And then, we will make sure that we are bringing forward in a plan. But we do have some facilities needs, overall, that we have to, to bring forward and address with you all, so.
Thank you. Are you bringing forward those facility needs for the 2016 budget cycle, or the 2015?
2016.
2016.
It's our plan.
Thank you. It's a little late to get it in the 2015, isn't it?
Well, there's still, there is included 200,000 in this, yes. Okay. Next slide. The proposed levy and impact to the taxpayers, what does that do to the tax rate? The, based on this proposal, the, the actual combined city and EDA tax rate would decrease from 2014. And this number basically means that the market values have grown, and if you divide the, the total property tax levy by the market value, that, and how you spread it to everybody, it creates a lower rate. The increase or decrease to individual property taxpayers will depend on the individual change in their, their own property value. And the focus for the city council is on the levy itself, because the, that is what you can directly impact. We show you this chart every year as well. It shows how the tax rate does not necessarily change with the actual levy increase. So, we have a levy increase this year. The blue, the blue columns are the levy increase, we're showing a 4 percent increase. And even with that, our tax valuations have grown enough that that would cause the rate to go down 4 percent. But you can see in other years, it goes, it, it goes up and down, but not, not necessarily As we compare to other cities, Burnsville has maintained, this is tax rates as well. You can see, most cities, their rates are going down from the prior year, so the blue being 2014's tax rate, and the green being 2015's tax rate. And so, we are consistent with other cities in that area, and we have maintained our spot in, as, as this goes from smallest to largest, we're maintaining pretty much where we have been. So, where do the residential tax dollars go? There's our city taxes, if, when you look at the total bill that a property owner will receive, about 43 percent will go to the city. 23 percent goes to the school district, the county gets about 28 percent, and then, other special districts would get about 6 percent of the tax bill. That's different in commercial and industrial, because the state of Minnesota is in there with a portion of the tax bill as well. So, they get about 32 percent, and the city will get about 29 percent. The others, smaller. This slide goes back to the change in valuations. We kind of keep coming back to this, because it does affect so many things. But in total, again, I'm, I'm sorry for the small font on that, but the, the grand total to the right of that black line is total valuation increase across all property types, and about 7 percent increase in valuation. And that would, that would be existing property. But as, as you look at the far-left bar, that's apartments, and they increase, as we talked about earlier, about 7 percent. So, they're kind of on the, the grand, about the same as the grand total average. But commercial and residential, or commu, commercial and industrial went up about 2 percent. Residential going up almost 11 percent. So, you can see that really changed. The point of the slide is that it's not all the same. Not everybody has the average 7 percent. The red bars are added into this chart, so we have, the, the blue bars are the same chart as we had on the previous slide. The red represent the increase due to new construction. And similar to what we talked about before, the majority of the new construction is in commercial, industrial, and in apartments. And the green bar, so same chart as the previous one, only adding the green bar. The green bar represents total. So, if you added the blue line and the red, the, the blue bar and the red bar together for each of those types, the grand total change in each of those categories. And as we've mentioned many times, the five-year financial projections, we look at, based on the projection for 4 percent in 2015, given the same service levels, and the, the pressures that we see in the future years, projecting those out, what would the, the projected levy increase be in the, the next few years? So, and you can see, 2016 is a 4.6 percent increase. That is mainly due to minimum wage, the difference between the, this year's 4 percent and next year's 4.6. We spread the minimum wage increase to the next year. There would, we're anticipating we'll have some healthcare, health insurance increases back again. And then, in 2017, 2018, 2019, some various changes within those years that allow us to bring those projections down. So, that's the first blush projection on those out-years. As we compare, that orange bar is, is the November, the one you just saw, that we just are comparing now with our more up-to-date numbers, compared to what we were projecting earlier this year. So, when we did the max tax, and then, we did the June estimates, we were projecting the out-years to be, come in a little higher. So, so we have some improved projections already here on our, on our out-years. And as with every year, we will, when May comes next year, we'll be looking at that in more detail and, and keep refining that as we go through each budget process during So, what's driving the need for those additional tax levy revenues in the future years? Increases in non-tax revenue, so those other things, those other fees and charges that we have, do not, are not sufficient to cover the cost of maintaining the existing services that we have. So, the, it would be, need to come from property tax levies for, for the police fire, parks operations, street maintenance, those kinds of services. It also includes continued restoration of tax levy support for parks' capital. There's one more big jump in parks' capital in the out-years planned. Another thing that contributes to that higher level of 4.6 in, in 2016. And continued funding for tree management for the Emerald Ashbore infestation. Continued annual increase for the street maintenance, the ITF levy. Restoration of funding for equipment and vehicles, improvements to facilities, so all that deferred maintenance and those facility issues that we've been talking about over the last several months, those are also a pressure on the horizon. And then, personnel costs, as I mentioned, minimum wage changes. We factored into 2015 that we would be adjusting our seasonals, that are, that's the biggest pressure on minimum wage, as of August 1st, which is the required date for the adjustments. So, then, that pushes out a full year's cost to 2016. And then, we do anticipate health insurance increases for the following years. Fees and charges are also included in your budget book. There are about 40 pages, 45, 43 pages worth of fees and charges to look through. Those we can also discuss at the next meeting, unless you had any that you wanted to bring to our attention now. Within the fees and charges, the departments have taken a, a close look at each and every fee that they're asking to be authorized. And they, when they look at that, the, the policy says that we'll do a market comparison, and we'll, we want to be in the upper quartile of the market, if there is a market for the fees. Or at a maximum set by external source, this would be like a, a legislation or the international building code. The entrepreneurial approach is, some of our fees in our enterprise funds, we want to be towards the top of the market in those fees. And then, whenever we have programs, we want to try to recover the cost of service. So, they're looking at, what does a, a program cost to provide that service, and make sure that the fees are as self-supporting as possible. that the fees are as self-supporting as possible wherever we can be within the market. And then the utility fees are based on an annual rate study. That's done in your five-year financial plans, or really that rate study. As we look at, um, fees, um, within that, the majority of the user fees are going to be the utility fees, about 80% and the other 20% are all other fees. So as you look at that, uh, 40 pages worth of, of fees, the majority of the fees are going to be raised through the utility fees. And, um, we mentioned this before, uh, to 4.5% in the water and sewer, um, no increase in the stormwater, no increase in the street light. Our sidewalk snow plowing is a small fee, um, but we do project to increase $2 per year for residential customers this year, um, and approximately 2 cents per foot, um, for the commercial customers. And we also project about a 5% increase in 2016 and 0% in all future years. Pressures in the, um, sanitary sewer and water funds that impact rates would be, um, improvements on the 30-plus-year-old plant. The meter replacements, um, critical for revenue collection. And we do propose some bonding in the CIP to, um, uh, provide cash for the water and sewer fund on those larger projects to spread the cost over several years. And then future rate increases would need to cover the debt service and restore fund balance for those projects as well. How we finally get to the general fund overview?
Debt question? I have a debt question.
Okay.
Are, are history on our debt as a percentage to our tax capacity? Back in '06, we're at 55%, '07, 59, and it jumped to 73, 65. And it, in 2010, it jumped into the eighties, mid-eighties, and now it's into the nineties. On one hand, you get the impression based on some other charts that our debt is very small, like, as, as, um, Ms. Johnson pointed out, by comparison to other cities, we are, uh, we carry fairly low debt. So I'm wondering, what's the driver on, uh, this percentage getting close to 100 or basically double what it was back in 2006?
Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Keely, for purposes of the public, um, when we're looking at the budget workbook, he's looking at page 140.
Sorry.
That's okay. I just thought it would be helpful for folks who are following along at home.
Before we jumped out of debt, I thought I'd get a debt question in.
I believe that, so that is outstanding, that is total outstanding debt. And that, um, particular debt number would include, um, the debt if we issue Cliff Road interchange debt for Cliff Road. So the, that's going to be, that would cause that to increase. The actual percent of the annual debt, um, is much, much lower.
Yeah, I think it may be, is it because to tax capacity, the tax capacity's been affected by, uh, lower valuation because of the recession, et cetera, the impact on, on property valuations? Because, for instance, we had, uh, totaled at a 58.1, which was 89% of capacity. But back in 2010, we had 64.1 and that was only 84%. So a larger number was, uh, a smaller percent of the tax capacity. So I'm assuming that part of this is market valuations in this capacity?
Yes.
So we're, and I know we're, we're just projecting, um, and I, I would assume our projections are based on moderate growth and evaluations of the high.
We, um, projected, um, either flat or very small growth to, in the out years, which we don't anticipate.
Yeah, I mean, it, it's a pretty conservative look at it because if, if in fact our housing valuations continue to grow at the rate they have in the last year, um, this percent of capacity, when we hit some actuals, we have the real numbers to work with, may not be 96 or 98%. It might fall back into the 80% range or whatever.
That's correct.
But we're just assuming very, very small incremental growth in the, in the tax capacity.
That's correct. We also would be, um, estimating the total debt issued at a very conservative amount too, which would be a higher number. We would estimate that we're, we'd issue the most, the most, that we, the worst case in that, um, with those projects. And typically, we're estimating a higher number than actual need to be in the end. So, so it is, does end up being kind of the worst-case scenario.
Yeah, we, I mean, we had 64.1 back in 2010. We're gonna, we're projected in 2019, uh, or even 2018 to have 68 and a half. So not a huge increase, but we're 84% of capacity to 98.4. And, and so a big jump in as a percent to our tax capacity. So, um, well, it's not that we're, our total debt is really growing that much. It's just growing as a percent of the tax capacity, which means the other side of the equation isn't growing at the same rate.
And the change in that year too would be that, that was the year the PAC debt came online as well, so.
Oh, is that what kicked it up by about 10 million there or whatever?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. So it, it could be, quite frankly, if the valuations went down, we continued at the same, you know, we'd end up at a little over 100% of our quote, tax capacity at some point. If we continue to increase debt and the valuation of the tax capacity didn't grow much, we could actually exceed 100% of our tax capacity value, correct?
For outstanding debt.
Yeah, for outstanding debt, yeah. Okay.
So looking at the general fund now, um, we're projecting, uh, use of funds of 36.9 million. And in the general fund, um, it is a service fund, so 67% of the cost within the general fund are personnel costs. So we're talking about your police and fire and all of the other, um, personnel that are performing the services, um, within the, the general fund. Current expenditures take up just 22%. And then transfers to other funds, um, the majority would be, um, well, there is, there is a list of transfers to other funds in your financial plan. I referenced that one on page 43. But, um, things like, uh, the, um, Parks Capital, the Sustainability Fund, Youth Center Fund, ICE Center debt. Equipment and vehicle is the largest one at a million six. That's our pay-go funding for our capital. And then, uh, 400,000 for IT. Within the revenue side on the general fund, we're at 36.8. Majority of the funding for the general fund is, uh, tax, property tax-supported, but we do have some charges for services. That would include, uh, EMS and, um, permits and inspections, our licenses and permits, some, a small amount of intergovernmental at 5% of rents and interest, um, is another small amount. And we have a small amount of use of reserves. On the, um, next slide, um, as I mentioned before, we're, it's general government services, such as police and fire, recreation, public works, um, 67% in personnel, you saw that already. And, um, we're using a, uh, smaller use of, uh, fund balance. We have, uh, a net increase of .2 FTE, which is just really a reallocation of some, um, personnel, uh, within the police department. And two of five of the union contracts have been settled for 2015. In current expenditures, uh, the, in the general fund, we have about 8.2 million of the budget in current expenditures. Um, and some of the highest, um, items we've listed here are some of our items that cause pressure in there. We have the APS software transaction fees are expected to increase 33,000. Um, that's in the police department. Uh, DCC operations and debt increased about 50,000. That's our Dakota Communication Center. And, uh, we have a need for ballistic vests of 40,000, um, this year as they are coming to, um, at the time to be replaced. In fire, we have a fire response time study at 40,000. We are proposing to use fund balance of 40,000 to pay for this study. It is a one-time expenditure one, so, uh, we feel it's an appropriate use of fund balance, but that is a question for the council, whether you want to use fund balance for that. Small equipment, um, within the fire department, about 22,000. And, um, the HOC, heart of the city parking ramp and deck, um, has some preventive maintenance that is, um, increasing this year for about $45,000. Those are the big items that we see across, across the board on current expenditures. We do also, um, an item I don't have listed on here, um, in the public works area is replenishing our salt, um, reserves. As you know, we've had a couple of bad winters and, and are really going into the, um, this coming winter without the reserves that we've had in the past. So those have got to be built back up again.
Mary? I just want to know if Steve planned today's weather, knowing that we are going to have to discuss this today.
Got an early use of that salt already.
We can get a good start on salt.
Yes, luckily we had enough, right? We do have enough.
Quick question, Mr. Ray. Did you throw these out as, because I heard, I thought I heard you say, these are things that we might consider?
No, these are things that are built into.
Built in.
They're, they're the larger items as we look at the, the department's, um, particular individual expenses. They're the things that jump out as the larger items that are changing for this coming year.
Okay.
There are a lot of, um, small ups and downs, um, within each department, within the line items. And these are the, the things that jump out as, as things that are, cannot be absorbed by another decrease in another area. A lot of departments, they're, when they can, they, if they have an increase in, in some line item, they're trying to find decreases in other line items to offset that. Some of them rise to, to be pretty big and it's, it's hard to find something to offset that.
Thank you.
Remember, last year, 2014, we were able to keep our current expenditure increase down significantly because of the new sales tax exemption law. So, um, that of course is built into this budget, this year's budget already. So that doesn't cause a change this year.
Thank you.
Or doesn't offset the change rather.
Right. That was a little bonus that we got with.
That was a nice bonus last year, yes. We've got license and permit revenue fee increases over budget, um, of last year, um, mainly making, matching where we're ending up for 2014. EMS revenue increases, we're expecting about a 5% increase in fees. We have an increase in run numbers as well. Um, offsetting that is, um, there's only so much that you can charge to Medicare. They have their own set rates, Medicare and Medicaid. Um, so no matter how much we increase the fee, it doesn't matter and what we get reimbursed in those type of runs. But we are expecting revenue increases there. And use of fund balance, um, included in this budget, we're projecting 315,000 to, of fund balance. I mentioned before the 40,000 for one-time expense for fire response time study. So, uh, if the council were to choose not to use fund balance for that, that would mean an additional, um, property tax levy of 40,000 or cuts of 40,000 to other expenditures or cut to that expenditure.
Kelly, I don't see that, uh, ballistic vests in that list. Is that?
In the use of fund balance?
Yeah.
We did not include that as a use of fund balance.
Okay, but you, earlier you raised the question of possibly.
Um, I think I was talking about the previous one, the fire response time study.
Oh.
Oh, that's, yeah, I think you're getting to what I was asking about is those items being.
Yeah, but what did you say about the ballistic vests?
Um, I, I think.
I guess I put, I put a note in there about fund balance, but obviously I got that wrong.
Um, they, they both are $40,000, but, um, the ballistic vests are, um, uh, this is the year where they need to all be replaced.
Okay, so that's not, I, when you said one-time expenditure, you were talking about?
I was talking about the fire, the response time study.
Then I'll just.
The item right below it.
Just take that off, thanks.
The ballistic vests would be one that doesn't recur the following year either, but they, it does recur periodically.
Yeah, okay, I guess.
But you've already built that into the budget.
It's built in right now.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Back to the use of fund balance, um, we have 140,000, um, which is your adopted plan from about three or four years ago, where we set aside, um, some fund balance for the next 10 years, or we're, I think we're in year four, um, to, uh, use fund balance to fund part of the debt service for the ICE Center improvements when we did the geothermal improvement. So that's 140,000. And then, um, the restricted tipping fees are a part of your fund balance that are restricted for specific uses. When we got that revenue from, uh, landfill fees, um, they have to be spent on, um, on certain kinds of, uh, expenses. And so the transfer to the sustainability fund and some of the other activities that we do in the general fund up to about 135,000, we would use the restricted tipping fees to fund that.
Question on the, uh, annual fund debt service for the ICE Center? Is that the, Craig brought it up, the idea back some years ago to use a million dollars over 10 years, 100,000 a year?
A million 400, yes, thousand.
Is that, oh, it was 1.4 million, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, I was gonna ask you that because I thought that number in prior years was 100,000 even. So I wondered where the 40,000 came from, but now I know.
Yep, it's been 140. And I, I believe this will be the fourth year, if I'm remembering correctly.
Yep. Thank you.
So with those use of fund balances and the projections of where we're going to end up in 2014 and the, and 2015, this is what your fund balance would look like. 2013, um, those are, um, your hard numbers from the, um, from the CAFER, from the annual report. Um, we do have a dip from 2012 to 2013. If you remember, that is the adjustment to the fair value of the investments. We have to, that's the unrealized loss. And, uh, so that is, that is a dip there. Uh, we do project that we will have gained back at least a million five of that, um, by the end of the year. If, if we were to, um, make that mark to market as of today, uh, we would have a $2 million swing backwards. So that's how that, uh, 2014 is going back up again. But we're conservative on that estimate as to where the fund balance would end. So you're still within your, um, guidelines for fund balance. The purple being your 35% of next year's budget. The unassigned contingency is the next layer of blue. And that is, um, the goal is, has been to keep that kind of in the $2 million range. So that's, that, uh, you know, a storm or some of those unusual, hopefully we won't have that much, uh, snow problems, but those could, that, that layer that can be used to meet unexpected needs.
Or used for certain one-time expenses as we deem them necessary. That's what we've used in the past.
And then, uh, the darker blue layer is the restricted amount for the landfill. So when I spoke about the amount that we were using for sustainability and that, that's coming out of that particular restriction. And then, uh, the green, greenish color on top is your assignment for the ICE Center debt. So that's the, the balance of the 1.4 after we've subtracted off 140,000 for the years that have passed. So previously, that amount, um, as, if you look at 2011, we had a, a 4.2 number in your unassigned for contingency, and that was the year. And that was the year then it was said, well, perhaps we have more than what we had planned to have in fund balance. So here's a way to set that aside to benefit the next ten years. So, so it moved really from that blue line up to the greenish line. That's all I had on the general fund. I'll move on to the special revenue funds unless somebody would like to ask something specific about the general fund. Cable franchise fee fund. This is the fund that we have from our franchise agreement for cable. And that is used for the B, the television, Burnsville Television, and also for Public Affairs Department. The, this fund, it has a planned capital expenditure for council chamber upgrade of technology and the chamber, and other items in the chambers of five hundred and twelve thousand for 2015. The fund is projected to be financially stable over the next five years. And annually, this fund transfers a hundred and eighty-five thousand to the general fund to support general fund activity. And that has, that number has been consistent over quite a number of years. And then the negotiation of the 2015 franchise agreement continues. Any questions on that fund? The forfeiture fund is a small fund that we have that, when we have police forfeitures, those need to be spent on certain types of expenditures legally restricted. So they are in their own fund. The majority of the expenditures are actually for the forfeiture itself. So when we get a forfeiture, we do have to share some of the revenues with the state and the, the courts. And so, so we, for instance, vehicle, if we have a vehicle forfeiture and sell the vehicle, we do split the, the proceeds. What's left is spent on police equipment. And this year's plan is for breath testing equipment.
Do we budget, I noticed, and are we budgeting about twenty-five thousand here? And outward years, this year, fifteen and forward, it's, we're budgeting?
It's been pretty consistent.
Twenty-five, other than the anomaly year of 2013 where we had a lot of DUI forfeiture.
Right. And the, these expenditures, we tend to focus on kind of one-time capital needs in the police department.
Yeah.
It's basically all that's able to be spent on.
Yeah.
So we don't, we don't plan very far ahead on what it is that they're going to be purchasing, but just that that is a, a fund that's available to, when we have those kinds of needs.
Sure. And it's thirty-eight thousand this year, and we're just estimated.
Right.
At twenty-five in outward years.
And for the most part, those aren't expenditures on police capital, those are expenditures on the forfeiture itself. So we'll have towing charges and storage charges and perhaps some other fees related to getting the vehicle ready for sale. And then we have to split the costs, or the proceeds, rather, with other agencies. So the amount that's actually spent on the police capital itself is a much lower number than those twenty-five thousand.
Just off the top of your head, do you know what the split is? What is this, what does the city collect on a forfeiture? For every dollar a forfeiture, is it, are we fifty-fifty with the county, the courts? A third?
We can get you that exact number. I want to say thirty, but.
That's what I was.
Thirty is off the top of my head, I think, is the number, but we'd have to look at what that was.
We can check, but I think that's.
And then who else gets the, it's the county, the courts, I suppose, the state?
The state.
Okay. There, peace.
The EAB Fund of Emerald Ashboro, this is the fund they started in 2011 to start preparing for the bug to arrive. And the funding source for this is property tax levy. We're increasing it fifty thousand annually. And the expenses for 2015 are planned for some treatment of trees and then also some capital equipment for tree removal, a chipper and a, something else, I think. The pickup, Steve?
Yes, we have some capital equipment. However, we are, we actually, like we do with all equipment, we're going to monitor and wait. We won't purchase that replacement until we're sure that we're moving forward. But the treatment has moved forward. This is our first year of actively treating. And so that will only expand as a, as a way to prevent the spread.
So this fund is building a small amount of fund balance. It may actually build more fund balance than indicated here, but we've got a planned expenditure of a hundred and eighty-five thousand and a revenue of two hundred thousand.
And I, was it two years we skipped making that increase?
I think one.
One year. So we did put that off a year or two ago, so.
It's all a gamble on when the bug is going to infest our trees, so we're.
And strategy-wise, so we're trying to be ready, but not get too far ahead of ourselves with expenditures.
Right. Thank you.
The youth center, the, the garage, as you know, the programs are changing over there. But the general fund support for 2015 is at fifty-eight thousand to support the BYC. The grant, this fund always has, or has some grant revenue. Grant expenditures will match grant revenue and basically, they will be passed on to the BYC. We have a level amount of CDBG grant revenue that's programmed for the youth center still and some grant revenue for capital improvements to the facility.
The fifty-eight thousand represents a reduction from seventy-two, five thousand.
It had been seventy-four thousand. The balance of that is still being funded. There's a youth, a youth, or youth, use of fund balance is projected for the building operating expenses. So there, there's a, a small fund balance remaining in the youth center. And that amount is going to be picked up. Instead of a transfer from the general fund, we'll use the fund balance in there.
Gotcha. And what's the projected, I had noticed in the book, you know, this is part of our, our exit plan from being into the youth services business. And fortunately, now, the school district and the YMC have taken it over, the programming. And so the programming is, is in good hands. I noticed in the outward years, we're, we're drawing down our general fund transfer to about forty-five thousand or forty-three or something like that. And then is there a forecasted permanent exit? Or are we basically filling that last roughly fifty thousand dollar gap in the funding by transferring that whole program over to the new partners?
On page fifty-four is the youth center plan. We do have forty-eight thousand planned for 2016, which I believe that is the two years of the agreement that we have a commitment for.
Mm-hmm.
And then we continued the forty-eight thousand into this fund and matched it with capital expenditures. We know that there are needs at that building that are looming, the youth, or the roof, rather, for that building. So the next three years of forty-eight thousand dollar funding would go to fund a portion of the roof or whatever else needs to happen.
Facility maintenance.
Facility maintenance, not the actual program.
As the landlord and owner of the building, we've got funding.
Sure. Oh, that's even better. So we're, this is, I actually took this as, it was money is going into, to continue to support the program. But in a, in a sense, we've, we've exited that a hundred percent. And the monies that we're putting in are actually just maintaining the facility, which is our, our participation in that program and that partnership.
So that would be a level, a level funding. And the remaining fund balance of that fund also would be available. If you look at page fifty-four, the final year, if you, of the, of this five-year plan, the fund balance actually dips to minus eight with that strategy. So that would basically use up the fund balance of that fund.
Good deal.
Yep.
Thank you.
Sustainability Fund, this is our combined effort with Apple Valley Eagan and Burnsville for the recycling program. We have funding from the county for all three of those cities. And then there are also some Burnsville-specific sustainability activities and the hazardous waste collection days that are funded from that landfill reserve transfer from the general fund that I spoke about earlier. I think that is about seventy-five thousand. Yep, seventy-five thousand. And this fund stays pretty level in, in that and not a large fund balance maintained in there, but can support itself.
I thought Mr. Sustainability Man would jump in and present this particular area because it's so close to his.
I'm sorry, I forgot about that. That would have been a good idea.
He got stuck in the storm, the traffic.
He's getting tired of me teasing about it, but I, I gave him an idea the other day for another superhero that he could come up with to bring attention to another part of our city.
I could have at least used his mask, right? The grant fund is another small fund. So this particular fund, we run miscellaneous grants that are one-time or, or, or small amounts running through this particular fund. There's only a nine thousand dollar budget in there. That is, and, and grant revenues match grant expenditures. However, during the year, we often have grants that you will accept that happen that we don't know about right now, that we're applying for. When we get awarded the grant, you do a budget amendment that, for the revenue and an equal budget amendment for the expenditure. So it's just a fund to run those kind of things through. It keeps things from distorting the, the balances in other funds. You do have in your budget document with the grant fund on page fifty-nine, the allocation plan for the city's CDBG, the Community Development Block Grant allocation for the year. We are anticipating a similar amount from last year. And I guess that was the next slide. So the major, it's a, it's a fairly equal split between housing and rehab projects and public service projects, so fifty-five, forty-five. The EDA Fund has a total budget of six hundred and forty-seven thousand of expenditures. The tax levy is scheduled to increase twenty-five thousand. The EDA levy that's pledged for the debt on the Ames Center is four hundred and forty-three The fund balance has a planned decrease of about three hundred and sixty thousand over the next five years, but still well above the required policy for this particular fund. And we always address, at each of these planning meetings, that you do have a policy that says we could transfer money from the general fund to the EDA Fund, but we have not built any transfer in for 2015 as the fund balance is sufficient to, in this particular fund.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Acting Mayor, I'm sorry. We, I know when we started this thing, it was four hundred and ten thousand for, how many years did we, did we put that four-ten in there back in like 2010, possibly?
Um.
When we started?
It is twenty-year debt, I believe, is that right?
Yeah, just, I remember that the transfer was sort of fixed at four-ten for a while, and now it's starting to look.
And the reason that we started increasing that last year was that the host fees that are in the PAC fund that also get transferred into this have not been at the level that we anticipated when issuing the debt. So this is a, a fill, infill for the host fee.
Gotcha. And the, the planned increases are just based on current trends of the host fee deficiency to old, to original plans back in oh-six, oh-seven, when PAC was planned?
Debt service needs. So the original plans for the host fees are expected much higher than we even needed for the debt. So we didn't, hadn't planned for the whole amount of the host fees to go to debt. So, but we've, we had been getting closer and closer to that point where the principal and interest amount that we did need was getting closer.
Right.
We do, the, the debt service fund for the PAC is included in the general obligation debt plan, but that's one of many in there. We do have an, a tracking of it within, more detailed within the finance department, that we look at that to make sure that we're going to meet that, those needs, more than meet those needs.
Okay. What's the actual, I just, I could find it, but you'd know it off the top of your head. What's the total debt service for the PAC or the Ames Center? Sorry.
The total principal and interest for, we would have to get back to you on that one as.
It might be on the P, is it on the Ames Center's budget page? I thought, maybe I saw it there.
It's a crux.
When we were on that page before, what page was that, like?
One-eleven.
Yeah, that's right.
Well, there is a line item for the host fees.
Yeah, just, I would assume that we have a line for the actual total debt service somewhere on here.
We do show the total transfers into the debt service fund on page one-ten. The actual amount of the principal and interest payment, I don't have off the, it's, it's fairly close.
Pretty close, huh?
Yeah.
Total transfer to debt service fund?
Yeah.
That's it? A million sixty-eight, is that correct?
Yep.
And seven hundred from the Ames Center Fund, which is basically the host, correct? And then three sixty-five transfer from the general fund?
Yeah, the, the EDA transfer actually goes to the PAC fund and then it goes to the debt service fund. So that's within the seven hundred.
Gotcha.
It's.
The, the four-eleven and now four-twenty-five and now, or going to be four-forty-six, whatever it is.
Right.
And then the three sixty-five transfer from the general fund?
That's the abatement levy. So the, so the abatement levy that was pledged to the debt, to the PAC debt, just by state statute, has to go into the general fund.
Got, oh, so it's in.
So it's an in and out.
Okay, so that's a wash.
So that is really a debt service levy.
Yeah.
But it just, just because of the nature of abatement levy, it goes into the general fund and then over to the debt service.
So if we were looking for a, just finding out what the net-net impact of the host fees not meeting as originally planned, the debt service, the increase above four-ten from the EDA would be?
That's correct.
That's the bottom line where the, the, the general fund from taxpayers are being tapped to fill in that gap because host fees have, through the recession, less garbage, more recycling, the host fees have dropped below what we'd originally planned. And so we're backfilling that difference from the general fund.
For the debt service.
And it's just whatever that amount is over four-ten is essentially what that number is.
Yeah, and, and the, the difference between what we had originally planned and that number would have contributed more to the PAC fund operations, that's for.
Yeah, because the, the number was originally planned to be larger than what.
In the four hundred thousand dollar neighborhood versus two.
Thank you.
Fifty, I think, is the number we have in there, two sixty.
So just out of curiosity, not directly on point, then what was the extra money intended for? Was that already kind of planned for the future, the extra money between? Because, because I hear you say there'd be, there was a two hundred thousand dollar difference, or did I misunderstand that? From what the original projections were and what they are now?
That would have gone into, the, the balance would have stayed in the PAC fund, enterprise fund to.
The host, you mean the, the host fee, original?
The host, no, the, the original number.
Right.
Versus what the number is now. Would you say what, what your original anticipated number was again, your estimated number?
Heather? It was around four hundred thousand.
Oh, Madam Acting Mayor, Councilmember Coffin, by staying in the fund, it would have reduced the operational subsidy.
Ah, I see.
And so, so that's really the difference that Kelly was mentioning. I mean. I mean, Ms. Stride was mentioning, and she can give you the numbers if you'd like, but I'm essentially that.
I understand, thank you.
Okay, we're down to the TIF districts. We have two active TIF districts, Heart of the City, TIF District Number Six, and then TIF District Number Seven, the MRQ. The budgets adopted for the TIF districts are based on the whole life of the TIF plan, and then we estimate what the annual amount would be, where we are in that. That is in the final pages of your budget document, beginning on page 225. The state doesn't require us to do these finance plans, but this is something we added a few years ago that gives you history of what's in that, what's planned for those TIF districts and where we are expected to be both in the next five years and then the final, original grand total budget of the whole district. Heart of the City, TIF District Number Six was established in 2002 and is scheduled to decertify in 2019. It's a renewal and renovation district, and it's there for redevelopment in the, in the Heart of the City area. We are collecting about $810,000 of tax increment that is increasing. It had been kind of flat for a while as valuations had been decreasing, and that is enough to pay the Debt Service payments and, and pay-go developer agreements that are committed to in that area.
Good, it's going up.
Mm-hmm, little bit. The MRQ, TIF District Number Seven, was established in 2012. It's a soils deficiency district, and we do not have any tax increment or expenses in 2014. We have delayed the start of that district until whenever the, we have some significant development in that area, and that maximizes the life and collections in that district. So nothing really to report on that particular TIF district. That concludes the detail portion of the meeting tonight. We, as a reminder, will be meeting again in two weeks on Tuesday, November 25th, and that's when we'll discuss in detail the CIP, our Capital Improvement Plan, and Enterprise Funds. And then December 2nd is your scheduled meeting, regular meeting for adoption of the budget. And that's at 6:30 is regular meeting. The public can view the virtual budget open house, as we talked about at the very beginning of the meeting. That's on burnsville.org/budget. You can find that there. You can also find the budget document that we have been referring to on the, on that website as well. And any previous meetings can be viewed through the minutes and meeting videos. We do have some discussion items for you and to consider, to give some feedback to us. The first item is an overall feeling on the tax levy increase of 4.0%. Is the council comfortable with that 4.0% increase in the total tax levy at this time?
Thank you, Suzanne. I, first of all, I want to thank staff for bringing it down as much as you have. I think that you've done really good work, and I know that you've worked, every department has contributed to that. I'm comfortable with that increase because I know most of it comes from things that are not within our control and things that we've discussed in past meetings. So I don't like seeing an increase, but I also know that we're, we're kind of at the mercy of what's happened in our state legislature right now. And I, I feel that I, there's really no other way to continue to provide the services that we are providing except to have this increase.
Bill?
Well, I look at it more, we're stuck with it. I'm not comfortable with it, but we're stuck with it. I thought long and hard about this. We're looking at about a 3.2 net increase, and unless, you know, at least the way I've looked at it, will we either have to decide to cut, you know, if our citizens are not satisfied, we'll either have to cut services in the future, which I don't at this point believe we should, or there's been some discussion about trying to deliver services differently, and that's for a discussion for a different time or day. And I, and I just want to reinforce that I do not believe we, you know, for example, our police department is a significant part of the cost of the property tax levy. I do not believe at this stage that this could be cut. These are, we live in very challenging times. Same, same goes for the fire department. We have a public to serve, but unless we can figure other ways to deliver services in aging community different, this is just a fact of life.
Dan?
My position hasn't changed since the last time we had this discussion. I don't agree with 4% increase, and I, I don't think we did what we're going to have to try and do in 2016 to be able to bring that down under 2%, under one and a half with existing money and most likely a similar. We've had a fairly consistent number of 0.5 to 0.8% every year in new tax revenue due to expansion of the tax base. I hope actually we get a little bit bigger bump in 2016 with the home valuations recovering from the recession, and the pie gets a little bit bigger, a little bit faster to help us out, but 4% is too high, period end.
First, I just want to say, Ms. Stride, that was a wonderful presentation. Thank you so much for all of your hard work, and Heather and staff, all the hard work that you've done, and I was so pleased to see, we asked you to come back with a lower number, and you did, and that was really great to see, and I feel the same way what Councilmember Sherry said, is we are, I think we're stuck. If we want to deliver the excellence of service that our citizens expect, a lot of these, the increases that we're seeing here, I just think are beyond our control. And as Bill pointed out, fire and police, that's a big chunk of what we're seeing here, and I, we just can't sacrifice that, those services. And so, you know, I, I agree, I think, and thank you so much for bringing back, you know, what we asked for, and of course, not as low as some of us would like to see, of course, but still a much, a better number than what we had to begin with, so thank you very much.
Mary?
And just to follow up, I, I, well, I agree with you, Dan, that, that I would love to see more contribution from new construction and new, new, higher valuation, but the reality is, is, is that's not happening, and unless we get some, just, you know, a real surge of development down on the MRQ, it's not going to happen. So I, I see the only way that we truly can get to the kind of proposal that you're saying, that everything has to come from new, new construction, or most of it would have to come from new, new addition to the tax base, is unless that happens, we're just going to have to cut services.
Or rethink how we deliver services, like we have in the past.
I think that we are, I mean, I really do.
There's, there's still more we can do, but we're not going to look, and we're not going to innovate if we don't put that burden upon ourselves to do so, like we did. We did it in '09 and '10 because we had to.
We had to.
Okay, now we don't have to? I say we have to. Every year we have to. Not to the degree, I'm not saying we got to cut $3 million out of our budget, but we don't, we don't innovate if we don't have to innovate. In 2009 and '10, we had to innovate because we didn't have a choice. Now we have to put it upon ourselves to look at the, what we're delivering and think differently about how we deliver it. And I have an idea for next year. It's just sitting there waiting for us. We have to talk about it. It's a discussion we need to have. We have to keep pushing in that direction. It doesn't just fall in our lap, which it did the last couple of years. We got some nice, you know, get out of jail free cards with homestead market value and the, and the taxes. We don't have any more of those left, so that means the burden is upon us to look and dig and rethink how we deliver services. What we did in '09 and '10, I thought was unbelievable. I mean, staff just rethought, they got out of the box, they thought differently about it, and they did a phenomenal job.
We also cut services.
We did, and we didn't hear a thing about it, no complaints.
Well, we heard some, but.
Not, not what I heard. I mean, what I was told was, we basically got by without any complaints.
You know, the question is, operating as we are, you know, are we going to cut services that are critical to the, the expectations and the welfare of this community? Because the bulk of it is in police and fire.
And public safety is not part of what I'm talking about.
Okay, Bill's been waiting.
And I just want to make clear, so our citizens know, in 2009, '10, we cut 21 full-time positions, so that was essentially the innovation, that we cut, did essentially a 10%, almost a 10% cut of staff. And again, we also, you know, I know that the council then also looked at trying to do, as, as, as staff does now, to look at other ways to cut some costs, going, looking at, going private versus public, but that's done now on a regular basis. And I'll, you know, wait with great anticipation to hear at, whenever that discussion is, is to, to look at doing a significant cut for the future.
Yeah, I will do.
To reach that, that goal.
And I want to clarify, our job as council members isn't to come up with all the ideas. Our job as council members is direct staff to look and come up with ideas. That's exactly what happened in 2009, '10. They came up with all of the ideas. And 21 people was a large amount, wasn't five, it was only 5% of our workforce. Do we have about 450 people at work?
No, we have 270.
275, it was 10%. But it was, it was not done because of council members coming up with ideas. It all came from the staff. That's the kind of staff we have. When put to the task, they delivered. It was huge, absolutely huge, what they came up with. And we'd got, we had this post-council meeting discussion after we did those cuts. Virtually no complaints is what I remember being said. And look where we're at today. We survived it, oh my God. We cut $3 million out of the budget in 21 people, and we're still doing a great job, and we're still doing fine, and the people are still happy. No one would have predicted that would have happened before the 2009 budget discussion. Post, look what we learned. That's all I'm going to say, it just, it doesn't come on a silver platter. It takes work, and it's not easy. Just ask the people who were involved in that whole cut. I mean, most of them are still here. It wasn't easy, but they did it.
Did you, Heather?
Madam Acting Mayor, members of the council, one thing that I would say is, one of the things we tried to highlight in the budget process during the departmental presentations is some of the, the innovations that we've been doing over time and some of the ones that are underway, because it is a culture, part of the culture here, to continue to look at doing things differently. The other large part of our general fund, obviously, police and fire are the largest part, but then street maintenance is also. They're really just the core services of government, and we continue to look at ways to do those things differently. We look at the, you know, equipment that we have, we've been looking at fleet, we've been looking at a bunch of different things. Some of those things just take a little bit more time than some of the service reductions that we did in 2009 and '10. So I would just want to assure all of you that we continue to look at different ways of doing services, so.
Absolutely. No, I think, I think we have a wonderful staff that is always looking and working hard and being still relatively new on the council. I still feel that there were things that we did when we had to do things, and we put them on the back burner, for instance, the parks, maintenance and that type of thing, where we can't keep putting them on the back burner anymore. There's some needs that I think we need to address, and I don't, I'll be anxious to hear if you have suggestions on that front also. And, and just, I think the sacrifices staff has already made and the pressures that we put probably on the staff, especially in those hard times, you know, just to acknowledge that and, you know, that we appreciate all of your hard work and continue to diligence to try to solve, you know, our budget problems, and let's thank you for that. Anything else?
We do have a few more questions.
Okay.
And this one, you, we, we talk about the five-year plan and the, the future levy increases. I think you've addressed that with this previous discussion that you just had about property tax levies and the future, the magnitudes of the future levies that are pending. The use of fund balance that we had programmed into this budget is 315,000. Again, it's that fire response time study for 40,000, and then our continued annual Debt Service contribution for the Ames Center, and the drawdown of restricted tipping fees is the council comfortable with those uses of fund balance?
Yes, I am.
Dan?
Or, I'm sorry, Bill?
I, again, yes.
Dan?
I agree with the fire response time and the annual debt service, that's a decision we've already made. We're sort of renewing that commitment with this comment and feedback. The planned drawdown of restricted tipping fees, we don't really have much choice. Correct?
We wouldn't have to draw it down. It, it's a use of that particular fund that's acceptable. If you, if you didn't, you would.
And it's being spent on?
Sustainability.
Okay. So we're all in agreement, yes?
Yes. If it's using existing funds, that's okay. I don't have a problem with it.
All right. Capital improvement plans, the two large projects that are built in, we, this is, this is actually a discussion, we're just, item for next time, the 25th, because we'll be talking about CIP, but we wanted to give them to you now, something to think about. And then, again, the 25th, we can address fees and charges again. Any preliminary thoughts on any of the fees and charges that you saw in the budget workbook that you're uncomfortable with at this point in time? Whoops. I should use my clicker instead. Utility fees will be another item that we'll discuss at the next meeting and ask for your And the parks capital plan, as well as use of LGA in the Equipment and Facilities Fund, and the annual increase in funding for those capital projects funds. And that's all, unless you have some other items that you would like to, us to specifically address at the next meeting.
Anything else?
Got all my questions.
No? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Item number two is roundtable, reports on advisory boards. Dan, do you have anything?
Nothing new since the last work session.
Okay.
I missed the last FireMister meeting because I had a meeting out of town, and I believe they were just doing a wrap-up of second, the second. There is a community foundation meeting that I did attend.
And the foundation is sponsoring what, on what night? Time to give a pitch, that's why I was jumping around here.
Yeah, I know. The holiday lighting ceremony is coming up on the day before Thanksgiving, which is between Thanksgiving and the day before, the day before annual get-together, which I haven't seen an email about this year yet. So Mr. and Mrs. Claus will be there. They will have the neon stick.
They will have the neon sticks or loops or bracelets that they had last year and more. There'll be chocolate chip cookies there. And the Community Foundation has a wonderful little ceremony planned for the city and hope everyone comes out and enjoys the lights being turned on and a little hot cocoa and some cookies and watching the kids run around with their neon light bands.
If I may add...
Please do.
The... There's going to be a children's choir from Sut Trail again, because I'm just working on that, and I'm setting that up. So, that's on pitching that. And also, the freestyle singers from the high school will be there. They're wonderful, as you know.
It's a great time.
They're wonderful.
It's a great time, and yeah.
It is a lot of fun.
Nice coming together for the community right before the holidays.
We'll do a little sing-along this year.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Nothing of any significance with my committee is new.
Nothing new from mine either, so. And the Ames Commission has presented their business plan and the budget, which we'll be talking more about. And we have it in our packet. They have a... Their special work session is coming up on Friday, the 14th. Is that correct?
Yeah.
I believe so, on the 14th. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Anyone else, anything? No? Okay, if there's no other business, we're adjourned by acclamation.
Should we sit here till the honor light goes out?